This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for October 5th, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 PM the day of meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer. Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Kreschel.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Leniman.
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Police Chief Ray Torono.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
Deputy Public Work Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Mayor Brummel.
Here. Clerk Larson.
Oh, here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all for attending this evening. We'll do the pledge of allegiance as we've come to do at this time. I will say it out loud here and invite you to say it along at home silently with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a proclamation this evening. The proclamation is for Arts DuPage Month, October 2020. I will read it to you so you know what it's all about. Whereas amid the COVID-19 pandemic, the role of the arts has never been more important to inspire, heal, and connect us with our country. And whereas the arts embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas the arts enrich us as individuals and play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and whereas the arts promote a better understanding of the diversified cultures within our communities and unify us regardless of age, race, and ethnicity. And whereas the arts sector in DuPage County consists of 2,272 arts-related businesses and accounts for 4.2% of the total number of businesses in the region, a larger share of the economy than transportation, tourism, agriculture, and construction. And whereas the arts provide full-time employment for over 15,000 workers in DuPage County. And whereas the arts improve our economy, enrich our civic life, drive tourism and commerce, and exert a profound positive influence on the education of our children. Whereas Arts DuPage has regularly issued official proclamations to all the cities, towns, and villages in DuPage County on an annual basis designating October as Arts DuPage Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Arts DuPage Month in the City of Warrenville, Illinois. And I call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the arts in DuPage County, which we certainly try to do here in Warrenville. Thank you for that. We'll move on now to citizens' comments. We have someone in the audience with comments this evening, so I invite you to come to the relocated podium and share your wisdom with us tonight. We have a new procedure. There we go. Now you're on camera, Bob.
Okay, Bob Seibert, Albright Court. This evening, I want to further discuss the stormwater drainage of Everton Development. I have the final stormwater report for Everton. On page two, it states, "The portion that drains to the south, to the unnamed tributary of Ferry Creek, includes 13.9 acres of onsite." This is 40% of that total development. "And 346 acres of off-site drainage. This all drains to two 24-inch pipes that go under the prairie path." The problem, if you go out there, they're stating here that it is going draining to the south. Because we know on the original photo that I had, it drained directly south and then down to Point Oak Drive, picked up the drainage tributary, and went to the creek. The problem, if you go down there, there's a direct, as soon as the water exits the pipe, it takes a direct 90-degree left turn and heads east, not south. And it continues going east. The question is, since Monarch Landing has been there for a long number of years, why did the water problem up by Fremantle's property only begin when the Everton project started? Think the solution and reason is very simple. This large amount of water that came from the west side of 59 and the 40% of the development did not go through the two pipes. It was sheeting on the north side of the prairie path and went east. So while Monarch Landing was developed, the rain came, but the water did not go through the two 24-inch pipes. When Everton began development, they put up a path to the prairie path. This basically cut off the huge eight-foot-by-three-foot inlet coming from the west side of Route 59 and controlled all this water. Now it would be forced into the two 24-inch pipes, about one-third the capacity of the input. Also, the 40% of the property stormwater drainage goes into the first pond, retention pond that you see just to the south of the apartment buildings. And then there is a 12-inch pipe that has a restrictor. But that, any water that gets out of that, goes down to the two 24-inch pipes. And then we add to this the wash coming off of Route 59 that used to sheet across the whole 32 acres because it has a decreasing elevation as you go north. And the entrance where the stoplight is now stops all the water and it goes back down also to these two 24-inch pipes. The water going east, at one point in time, as it reached the area where you ran the sewer and water at the beginning there by Conforty's property, just before that is where there had been a movement to the south. I walked the whole property. There is no way now the water can get to the south. There's a small three-foot river creek, but it's, can't get there. There's elevation differences. And the water coming east from the two pipes is 10 to 12 foot wide, and ripping out many of the trees. So I think that the problem we have here is twofold. That the original, and they even show it on their schematic, they show that the drainage is going south to one of the major ponds on Monarch's property. It cannot get there under today's conditions. This is why the water, when you get large water, it is coming up towards Fremantle's and towards my property. It will not decrease. The more buildings, the more that's contributed into stormwater, because it's not all there yet, it will continue to build. There's about five acres, four acres of water storage there or more. And the only place that can go is through the two 24-inch pipes. Evidently, SEMCON did not walk the route as to where the water would flow, because the water cannot get to the creek. In the mid-'70s, the water, it's a picture I showed you, went to the creek. It always went to the creek. Now it is coming up because water will find the littlest resistance there. It is coming up to residential property. So I hope that this can be addressed. And it's a simple solution, but it's a costly solution that individuals have not done their job.
Thank you, Bob. We do not have anyone else present that wishes to speak. Do we have any emails for this evening? No emails. Do we have anyone on the phone that wishes to speak? Okay, once we conclude the citizens' comments, there will not be another opportunity for the public to comment at this meeting. So we're going to move on then. I'm sorry.
Mayor?
We have someone?
Well, this is Greg Collins. I'm actually an agenda item with Everton, with MI Homes. I don't know if I'm caller one or caller two. I'll be honest. I don't know what it clued me in as. Am I a caller?
We'll call you a caller.
Okay. Or a GC. I guess I see GC there. I apologize. I don't know. I had informed, maybe it was late in the day, the clerk that I didn't want to speak on behalf of my agenda item and actually pull from the consent agenda.
Okay. That is item... Where is it? Which one? Why can't I find it now?
It's item K.
I'm not that far yet. Okay, we'll just take item K off of the consent agenda and we'll have you speak at that point, Greg. How's that?
Sure, great. Appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, anyone else on the phone? Very good. We'll move on then to official and staff comments. I have a couple of things this evening. There have been questions from time to time of what's going to happen with trick-or-treating in Warrenville. Of course, the city does not control that. That's more of a tradition that's carried on by the community. It's not an official event by the City of Warrenville. But after taking into consideration the Illinois Department of Public Health's recommendations and their Halloween festivities guidance for celebrating this year, the city has established the trick-or-treat hours of 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And if you go to the city's website, there's more information on what is a safe way to celebrate this holiday. Some people may want to opt in. There are signs available that can be printed off the website to opt you into that, to let people know when they come to your porch. And there's also a sign that allows you to opt out. So that's on the website if you want to let people in the neighborhood know whether you want to participate or not. Okay? And then the continuing reminder that we have to give out, you've got to continue to follow the safety guidelines for the prevention and spread of the COVID-19. Wear your mask, wash your hands, and do your social distancing. Nothing has changed. The virus is still out there. It's still very potent. It's still very contagious. It's still very dangerous. So please keep that in mind. Be respectful of your neighbors. That's the whole idea of wearing the mask. It's still so people that are not wearing masks in public and interacting with others, and you're putting them at risk because you may be sick and not know it. So please keep that in mind that we're still in a very dangerous situation that may continue for some time. And a reminder to our public speaker here from the citizens that you can get out the easy way when you're done at the end of the meeting. You don't have to go back through City Hall. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the last day to register to vote here at City Hall. After that, you can go online until October the 19th. You can also go over to the 421 County Farm Building Board of Elections counter and to register to vote. I will have more information probably at the next meeting as to polling places and some procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer Larry?
No report tonight.
Thank you, Alderman. We'll do our usual roll call to go through to see if anyone has anything to add at the beginning of the meeting, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
Just wanted to say one thing, which is that I was fortunate enough to be able to vote today. I put my ballot in the mail. After four years of college and three of law school, I've had to vote by mail for seven years in my life, although I've always been a Warrenville voter. And it's not a difficult process. It's something people have been doing for decades. It's just the same as it always was. I understand that because of the big surge in mail-in votes, the clerk would like us to vote early if we can or to vote early by mail if we're voting by mail. So that's why I voted today. I got my ballot out to the mailbox, and I'm confident that that gives it plenty of time to get to the clerk's office and time to be counted. And I have great confidence in our mail and in confidence in our election authorities. So thanks to them for their hard work.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
Okay, I'm it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I was reminded by Plan Commissioner Tim Cosgrove that the courtyard is a place where you can go to early vote. So very convenient for Warrenville residents to go out and early vote if you don't want to take advantage of the opportunity that Alderman Goodman just mentioned. By mailing in your ballot, you can go in person to the courtyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
No comments.
Okay, very good. Staff comments. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Goodman, just reminding me, just at lunchtime today, I had filled out my mail-in ballot, but I took it over to the county and dropped it off in their drop box, which is secure. It was very easy to do. And I would just encourage everybody to remember to vote, whether you do it in person, early voting, or by mail. It's important in a democracy, and please do.
Well said. Mary and I got our ballots in the mail, filled them out, and we did as John. We took them over to the County 421 Building. There's a very secure, heavy metal box there that you can drop them off. And we were delighted to see that there was a line of people dropping off their ballots. So join us. Vote early and take pressure off the system. System will work, but hopefully we'll have a great turnout this year and we'll be taxed with the number of ballots that can be counted. City Attorney Brooke?
The only comment I have is just, I was having a little bit of trouble with my audio at the very beginning of the meeting. So I just wanted to make sure for the record that the meeting is being held remotely tonight pursuant to Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, that is correct. Yep, we made that announcement early on, so we're all set. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure. My audio was garbled, so better not. Thanks.
Keep us on the straight and narrow. That's why we like having you with us. Okay, we'll move on then to the approval of the agenda with that one change in mind that we're taking item K off and putting it on the regular agenda. So could I have a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
Alderman Widener, with the removal of item K from this evening's agenda, I make a motion to approve the agenda for the October 20th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Okay, and we're removing it just from the consent agenda, not from the agenda as a whole. So, okay, does everyone understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. We have the roll call, please.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening has been approved as amended. We need approval for a couple sets of minutes. Again, Alderman Widener, would you like to make the motion?
Certainly. I motion to approve the minutes of the September 21st, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the September 28th, 2020 Public Safety and Finance Committee Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Please identify yourself and speak up if you have a question or a comment. Hearing none, we'll move then to our roll call. Emily?
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir. Alderman Bavir.
What?
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02020-35, reauthorizing and extending the auxiliary outdoor seating area program through June 1st, 2021, due to the COVID-19 emergency. B, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and pass resolution R2020-58, extending the duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. C, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2020-59, approving the establishment and implementation of the food and beverage establishment permit fee waiver and revenue sharing assistance program. D, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2020-60, approving the engineering agreement with Engineering Resource Associates, Incorporated, for the final engineering Phase II design of the Mack Road Path and Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $341,256.93. E, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2020-61, approving the local agency agreement for federal participation for the final engineering Phase II design of the Mack Road Bridge and Bridge, excuse me, Mack Road Path and Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $341,256.93. That will be cost shared with $209,555.00 of STP bridge funds and $132,251.38 for the local share. F, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and authorize staff to issue a request for proposals for the city's residential refuse and recycling collection services. G, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation authorize the city attorney to draft amendments to the electric power aggregation plan of operation and governance to allow the alternate aggregation model and direct staff to proceed with the public hearing process. H, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the fiscal year 2022 budget preparation and adoption timeline, including a City Council budget workshop on Saturday, March 13th, 2021. I, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and adopt the proposed city holiday schedule for calendar year 2021. J, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the calendar year 2021 City Council and Committee of the Whole meeting schedule. L, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting held on August 13th, 2020. M, receive and file minutes of the Community Relations Task Force Regular Meeting held on August 25th, 2020. N, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on September 24th, 2020. O, receive and file report of invoices paid up to September 29th, 2020 in the amount of $109,564.90. And P, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before October 19th, 2020 in the amount of $112,521.14. May I have a motion, please?
Alderman Widener, motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Motion and a second. We have a roll call, please. Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Thank you. Only the consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will return to item 6K. Would someone please make that motion?
Alderman Berry, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance conditionally approving Everton Townhome Subdivision temporary real estate advertising sign variations.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will go back to our citizen commenter first to get his comments before we have discussion by the council. Greg, would you identify yourself, please, your position and state your case?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Again, Greg Collins with MI Homes, the petitioner, the developer of the property. Through deliberation with the Plan Commission, and I have no problem with the recommendation set forth by the Plan Commission with our deliberation to reduce one of the sign sizes. It was a condition that I brought up in the staff report specific to the recommendation of approval conditions under item or section four in the staff report, number four, removal of signs. And in there, I have no problem with the removal of those signs when we have six or less units to sell. I just had stated that I would like to remove the condition whereby if the commercial property develops, I have to remove sign on the commercial property. We did discuss this condition, but again, as deliberation continued, I forgot to come back to this issue. I own the property, so ultimately I have control of it and would work out with any contract purchaser, ultimate purchaser of the commercial assigned lease to allow us to continue to have the sign there anyway. So I just felt that, you know, this particular condition wasn't necessary for this particular application. So what I would ask is that, you know, everything that the Plan Commission recommended and staff had recommended, I'm fine with, except for that last sentence of section four, item four in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Community and Economic Development Director Mensah, could you comment, please?
Yes. Waiting for my camera to fire back up there. Good evening, everyone. The, the application that was recommended for approval by both staff and the Zoning Board of Appeals would allow for three new fairly large temporary real estate marketing signs to be placed along the Route 59 frontage of the Everton project, one at the south end, one at the north end, and then one at the northeast corner of the new Route 59 Duke Parkway Signalize intersection. That is the one that Mr. Collins is speaking of. That would be located off of, that would be considered an off-site marketing sign, and it would be located on a commercial outlot that MI Homes currently owns and hopes to sell and see developed relatively soon. In the staff report, we, our default condition was to allow the sign while there was no development happening on that commercial lot. And then once there was going to be some development, that the residential marketing sign would need to be removed. From a staff perspective, we really don't have a problem if the residential marketing sign remained while there was construction on that property. It might create some coordination issues while they're doing work if the sign's in the way. But ultimately, from a staff perspective, we think that once there's a business there and it's ready to open, having a second large ten by, or 70 square foot, 12-foot-tall sign for residential marketing purposes, probably would not be consistent with the commercial operations and permanent signage that would likely be on that property and at that same corner. We don't know how the property's going to develop. We don't know how a long-term residential marketing sign might fit into what that final development might be from a permanent perspective. So while staff wouldn't necessarily have any objection to adjusting the condition, we would still recommend that it be adjusted in a fashion that would require that the permanent or the temporary residential marketing sign be removed before any business is issued an occupancy permit and opens on that property.
Okay, does that change anything in terms of the motion that's been made this evening thus far? Do we need to make any change in the motion, is my question?
If you, if you want to, you know, follow what the kind of revised staff recommendation, I just tried to articulate that would require that the condition, the last sentence in the condition, which is condition number four, be adjusted to, instead of saying, right now it references before a building permits issued, I think just changing that to before a certificate of occupancy permit is issued would be sufficient from a staff perspective. That's, that's not consistent with what the applicant's looking for. I think they're looking for just the kind of long-term ability to have that marketing sign on the property in some form or another, even after a business opens there. And the council sympathetic to that, it would require further modification to that. Well, it just require that last portion of the current condition to be eliminated.
Okay, so you're suggesting one of two options here. One, option one would be to take things as they're presented. Option two would make that change in the last number four sentence to change the wording to reflect occupancy permit instead of.
Building.
Right, okay.
Prior to construction starting, sorry, this is Attorney Lemon.
Yep.
Okay.
The building is prior to construction.
Yep, okay, you're correct. I'm looking at it now online.
Okay, so say it again, please, and so we have it clear. Ron?
So Mr. Mensah is suggesting that the last sentence or the last clause be changed to say, instead of prior to construction start on the commercial property, to say prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the commercial property.
Okay, so that, that's.
I'm not sure that's what the applicant is requesting.
Right. Okay, so that's what we have then. We have the original motion. We have a possible change suggested by Von Mensah. Let's go back to Greg Collins. Collins, Greg, do you have any additional comments?
Sure. I mean, yeah, I don't agree with that change. Look, or, look, to make this flexible for everyone involved, or, you know, because that's, again, the main entrance. You know, if that's the case, at occupancy, then I have the ability to move it to the other corner, which is residential in nature. Right? If the, if, if I'm being challenged to remove it because it's a commercial property, the other, the other corner is residential, right? Residential nature, it's a residential corner, I guess, by definition. I mean, these are temporary signs, so this is not a long-term issue. Long-term is a tough word to use when you're dealing with temporary signage. You know, it's there for the duration of the project as best we can. And, you know, the quicker it out, the temporary sign is removed. So, you know, if there's an ability to move it to the other corner then, without triggering another public hearing, and I have secured that with through a lease or through understanding with the property owner, which would be the apartments, you know, would you allow that then? If that corner is not a viable location, given the commercial nature of the site?
Ron, back to you.
Well, I, that's a different proposal than what is being discussed. I, you know, from my staff perspective, we wouldn't have a problem with that sign being placed on the, basically, instead of being in the northeast corner, it would be moved to the southeast corner, when and if there's a business developed on the northeast corner. But I don't know, and, you know, could complicate things down the road, as if the apartment complex comes in and asks for some type of signage relief to have their own large marketing sign at that corner. Whatever we approve here would certainly play a role and would be a consideration when the city, at least from a staff perspective, considers what the apartment complex may want to do from a temporary signage standpoint on their property. But just conceptually, from what we know today, I would not have a problem with the proposal that Greg just outlined, moving it instead of removing it when the commercial property is developed, allowing it to be moved onto the property at the southeast corner with the authorization and approval of the owner of southeast corner of the intersection.
Okay. Greg, are you in agreement with what Ron's proposing here?
Yes.
Ron, this is Attorney Lemon. I just want to make sure that there wouldn't be any additional relief required for that.
Still an off-site. It's an, one of the approvals that is being granted or was requested and recommended for approval is an off-site real estate marketing sign. So whether that's off-site on the northeast corner or on the southeast corner, it's the same, that same approval would be required. Size and setbacks of the sign aren't going to require any additional relief other than what's already been recommended.
Okay, Brooke.
Okay. And that's subject to the owner of that property approval?
They'd have to have some formal type of agreement and approval to do that, yes. In my mind, I mean, they don't have any, they'd have to show us they have authorization to have the, to relocate that sign onto that property, which that has not been provided to date because that hasn't been discussed as an option.
Right. Right.
So.
And that sign will be removed once there is less than six units available?
That's, yes, that's, that condition or that portion of the removal condition would apply to all signs. All temporary real estate signs regardless of where they're located.
Okay.
All right. Okay, then let's go back, Ron, one more time, just to articulate what change you would recommend to the presentation tonight for the motion, so the council can decide whether or not they want to go with the original motion or go with the amended motion that you're suggesting.
I would suggest that the last portion of the condition number four, it's the line that starts with that, the large real estate sign on the commercial lot shall be removed. Let's see, shall be removed prior to construction start or prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy on the commercial property period. This sign may be relocated to the southeast corner of the same intersection, provided proper permission and approval has been granted by the owner of that corner. And this, we'll, I mean, that's the gist of what we need to do if the council's sympathetic and supportive of that. That's the essence of what we'll work with the attorney to incorporate into the actual ordinance that's going to be prepared and brought back for the next city council.
Okay, and Greg Collins, you're on board with this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's go to the council then for questions on the issue or comments before, excuse me, before we have a vote, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No questions.
Okay, Alderman Berry.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
Just one question. When you say things like other corner, we have some maps in the backup material, but without knowing what other location you're talking about, can we really approve at a particular location? I mean, we would need to be concerned about setbacks and so on for whatever this new alternate location is to make sure that it complies. I just, I'm afraid the wording still seems a little vague to me, and without a specific map, it seems, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I guess from a staff perspective, we can ensure that between now and when the agenda packet for the next city council meeting is prepared, we will acquire a alternate location map so we can reference that in, in the ordinance that is going to be prepared to memorialize any approvals that the councils ultimately may ultimately grant for this. Right now, the, the action on the agenda is to accept the, the playing, or the zoning board of appeals recommendation and direct the attorney to prepare the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, and Alderman Wilson.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, very good. We are on to a roll call then.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman. I'm sorry, this is Attorney Lemon. Can we clarify which motion were approved, which wording we've approved?
Ah, okay, I guess we should do that. My suggestion would be the one recommended by Alderman, by Community and Economic Development Director Mensah. So let's go through the Alderman and make sure they understand which one we're voting on then. We're voting on the amendment to the motion that's presented earlier by Ron Mensah as opposed to the one that was in our packet, okay? Is that clear to everyone? Let's make sure, Alderman Ashauer.
And just to.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And just to clarify, this is the, if approved, this would direct me to prepare an ordinance with that condition as amended, which would be then voted on in the next council meeting.
Right.
Just to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke. Interject anytime, Brooke. We want to keep things clear and transparent here. So let me go through the list again and make sure, of course, what did I do with my list? Alderman Ashauer, are you understanding what we're doing and what we're voting on?
Yep.
Okay, Alderman Berry.
Yes, I do.
Good, Alderman Bavir. Good, Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I'm on board.
Good, Alderman Goodman.
I believe we need the motioner and the seconder to agree to that amendment. The mayor doesn't just get to say this is the amended motion. The motioner and the seconder need to do that.
Yeah, it's not part of the motion, it's part of the backup to the motion. So the motion remains the same, it's just that we're changing direction to staff in making the preparation for when they bring it back to the council. So I don't think we need to amend the motion. We're just amending the wording of the backup.
But the motion refers to the backup. I think it's just more correct to have the motioner and seconder agree to amend the motion.
Sure.
I think that's, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, let me finish the list and then we'll do that. Alderman Crishell.
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Widener.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Wilson.
Yes, agreed.
Everyone knows what we're doing, and could I have assurance from the motioner and the seconder that the alteration is acceptable to them?
Yes, I agree that the change in the motion is acceptable. I also agree.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions then, before we move to the roll call? Very good, thank you. Emily?
I'm going to start over, so, okay. Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Greg Collins, you're free to go. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night. We'll move on then to the regular agenda. Could I have a, someone make the motion that suggested under seven eight, please?
Alderman Davalos, I make a motion to accept staff recommendation and direct city staff to follow the provisions of City Code Sections seven dash four C dash six, seven dash four C dash eight, seven dash four C dash 10, and seven dash four C dash 11 regarding delinquent water and sewer accounts.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to start the discussion and explanation of what this is all about. City Administrator Coquely.
Thank you. We may need to get some input from our finance director and/or our deputy public works director, but I'll start. As the council will recall, there was a, the council suspended the shut-offs during the springtime. The city then resumed water, delinquent, late fees and shut-offs during the month of July. The council then revoked or voted again, excuse me, to extend the moratorium or suspension of shut-offs, turn-offs, and late charges during, all the way up through the end of September. Staff has assessed the impact that's written in the backup. There are a number of accounts that are delinquent higher than they normally would be. There's information in the memorandum from the finance director about the, just what the costs are, loss of, or the impacts, the revenue that would be generated under a, under a normal timeframe. But additionally, at least I was made aware, and I've shared that with staff, that there's at least one property owner, a owner of a rental property in town, who is having some difficulty because the property owners are ultimately responsible for the water, water bills if they're not paid by the tenants. And the tenant is not able to, I believe the tenant isn't paying rent or the utility bills right now. The property owner's on the hook for them. The city cannot, is, the city staff is not authorized to shut them off or give them such notice right now. And as you may well know too, and I won't get into the details anymore of that particular property, but I believe it's probably not the only case. The state has, for good reason, I believe, limited anyone from being able to evict a tenant who is not paying. So the property owner is now on the hook. I know that we're looking at it sometimes, the staff and possibly some of the council as a humane issue about people who can't pay their, their utility bills, but there are some business owners who are, in this case is also a resident who is having a lot of problems now because of that same factor. I just offer that as additional information. I think we all understand that there are people now that may be under extreme hardships because of the pandemic that can't pay their utilities. State, the state government has put a, I believe, a moratorium that has been extended on private utility companies, electric, gas, that cannot be shut off right now. that cannot be shut off right now. Municipal utilities are not included in that kind of moratorium. So that's some of the background. Staff is encouraging or recommending, I should say, that the city go back to allowing us to reinstitute the shut offs and late fees. The past practice and council authorization for finances fairly flexible and broad for them to negotiate payment plans, waive late fees in certain circumstances. And they have been doing that for many, many years. Did that for, during July. That's how many the, most of all of the late delinquent accounts came up to being current. Many were set up with a payment plan so that they could accommodate the needs. I'll add for one other thing is I'm very concerned, and this has been noted in some media reports about delinquent accounts, that if we allow the accounts to just keep accumulating as late, they will just amass a much, much larger amount in a few months. That doesn't make it any easier for someone to pay, even if they are now working and now have some income. Suddenly they owe six months, 10 months, whatever of water bills that are delinquent. I don't think that may not be doing a, really helping people out there, but there's certainly many sides of this issue. And we need council direction and a vote on how to proceed with this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. That kind of frames the issue for us. A reminder that for going the payments now, they are still accruing a balance that will continue to, you know, accumulate over the months. So the trade off is getting a break now, but facing a big nut to crack somewhere down the road. So we want to be compassionate, we want to help people. But obviously, we would like to do that in a way that doesn't cost them more harm long term while it helps them short term. So under those guidelines, maybe we could have some input from the council in terms of how you'd like to proceed tonight. So we'll begin again with Alderman Ashauer.
I support reinstating the the old policies. I think that, that city's been more than for, with the residents on, on how to work out the problems. I don't think it serves anybody anything long-term good by just allowing it to accumulate.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
I agree with Alderman Ashauer. I think that if someone does have an issue with paying the bill that's already accumulated in one fell swoop, I think they have to understand that they're going to have to come into city hall and work out something with the finance department regarding the payment of the past due amount. And then hopefully going forward, paying the bills as they come in. We can't go on forever just accumulating this past due balance when we are going to be in a budget shortfall to begin with ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bavir.
I'm in favor with the first two Aldermen and going back to the original plan. I agree with all the comments they said. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Miss, I just had one question. When it says here they're going to reinstitute the late penalty, so they will be starting from now. We won't go back to grab any penalties on, with the summer and early fall. We're just starting, they owe the water bill, but they don't now, in the past water bill and then going forward, they owe penalties in the water bill. But we're not bringing penalties forward, just the water, the deliberate water bills forward, is that right?
Finance Director Dalstrand, could you chime in, please?
Absolutely, that is correct. This would not be done retroactively, be done going forward. So we would not go back and try to like recoup any penalties.
Okay, then yes, I would be in favor of the, of the motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I have a question for Finance Director Dalstrand. When we last talked about this moratorium as a council, you told us that there had been 55 water shut offs in July when we inadvertently, I guess, suspended the moratorium without any discussion at the council level. And that 53 of those 55 had been turned back on. When the moratorium began, did those other two people get their water turned back on?
One of them reached a payment arrangement with us and I don't recall what happened with the other one. But, but everybody did pay, reached an arrangement and was turned back on, with the exception of the, the one that I don't recall what happened.
Okay, Alderman.
Does the Public Works Department know?
Public Works?
My recollection was there was 54 out of 55. I don't, I, I don't think that anybody's water's been shut off that hasn't been turned back on where there's somebody occupying the residence.
Okay.
Okay, because I think that one thing that Administrator Coakley mentioned, which I'm not sure had enough emphasis, was that the state right now has an eviction moratorium that's in place until the spring. So that means that these people who aren't able to pay their rent, they're going to be able to stay in their houses. But if we shut off their water, they're going to be constructively evicted. That's a legal term, basically meaning that their house becomes uninhabitable. So I feel like us reinstituting water shut offs doesn't violate that law, but it violates the spirit of that law. I'm very concerned that in the middle of a pandemic when we're spending every single meeting encouraging people to protect themselves against COVID, and we've mentioned often the importance of hand washing, which the CDC refers to as our first line of defense against COVID-19. That instituting water shut offs is, it's not only somewhat inhumane, but it's also a very poor decision when it comes to public health. The World Health Organization recommends frequent and proper hand hygiene as one of the most important prevention measures that we have during this pandemic. There's a live tracker from a website I found online, Food and Water Action, which has been monitoring how many local and state moratorium there are on water shut offs for non-payment during COVID-19. And at the moment, their tracker says 148 million Americans are protected from disconnections, which is about half the country. As Administrator Coakley already said, the state of Illinois, the Illinois Commerce Commission has issued an extension and has negotiated that extension with all of the private companies which offer water services in Illinois as well as the power and natural gas utilities. So that, that extension goes through March 31st. It's not indefinite. It's not forever. So the people in Warrenville who would be dealing with new water shut offs, if we change this policy, will be in the minority. It will be unlucky to live in Warrenville because we've changed this policy. Whereas if they lived in someplace with private water systems, they would have a moratorium protecting them. If they lived in one of those other communities, other 148 million Americans who are protected from water shut offs right now, they wouldn't be so unlucky. I feel pretty strongly that this is a bad idea. I think that even though the one landlord who has complained to the finance department about having to pay his tenant's water bill when he's not able to evict him, is in an unfortunate position. That landlord has recourse. Landlords can take their tenants to court for unpaid utility bills as well as unpaid rent. Whether they're going to be able to get that money back, I don't know. That's not really our responsibility as a city. Different landlord and tenant contracts have different agreements with respect to utilities, whether it's going to be a tenant responsibility, whether in some cases it's a landlord responsibility. I just don't see that as an issue that the city should involve itself in or that we should be taking as a higher priority than things like public health and being decent to our neighbors during a pandemic right now. So I feel very strongly that we should not adopt the new water shut off policy being proposed by staff. I think it's a terrible idea.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell?
Two, well, one question, I guess. So the the, the number estimated here on the 18,900 in penalty fees and additional 1,500 loss and turn on fees. Are those, that's just the penalties which we would not be recouping anyway, right? The, the the main, you know, water service bill is not reflected in here. Is that correct?
Kevin?
That is correct. All that is, is a, is an estimate of the lost penalties and turn off fees which did not occur. That does not include any of the actual fees for the sewer or water service.
Okay, and and do we, do we have an estimate of the actual service outstanding bills that are out there?
You mean the straight bills for the water and sewer service themselves?
Correct. If we were to get brought up current right now, what that, what that number would be, roughly.
Give me just a second. The delinquent part, if I recall, and I, of course, I can't find it only because I need it right now, is about $197,000 is the delinquent portion. I'm sorry, that's not right. Hold on just a moment. No, I'm sorry, I'll have to get back to you with the number. It is not a significant number and it is not significantly higher than last year. It's not a very large number that is delinquent. And the goal here is not really to, to collect the, the penalties and fees. It's just to collect the outstanding balance, but I will provide the council with, what that number is.
Okay, so yeah, that was my second point. I was just curious as to the amount of delinquent bills that are outstanding today. I think agreeing with the older Alderman earlier, you know, I don't believe it does good to continue pushing this forward, especially when there's opportunities to make payment arrangements, to set up payment plans, type things like that, without getting your service disconnected. I think at some point as a city, you know, we, we provide the service and I think that we're going to have to start collecting on it soon. So I'm, I'm in agreement with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Do we have any idea how many residents have been affected by water shut offs?
Kevin?
I can't answer that because we haven't done any. I don't know, I, I can't quantify what didn't happen. I have no idea.
So we have not turned off water for anyone?
Not, no. After we reinstated this, we've not turned anybody off, have not applied penalties. So I can't quantify something that did not happen. I don't have a number for that.
Okay, Alderman?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Alderman Goodman said, and I think this deserves more study in that the city of Warrenville that I'd like to live in, you know, takes all the opportunity to safeguard the health and well-being of their residents. You know, shutting anyone's water off, I think we ought to develop a list of alternatives for them so that they don't have excessive fines and so that they don't have to go through an unhealthy situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Well, I think the fact that this has been in service for a while, it hasn't really gotten us back to where we need to be. And I think I'm in favor of doing exactly what we want to do, reinstating this. We've worked with those individuals who were not able to make the payments. They've tried to work out payments circumstances for them. So I think it's, I'm in favor of this motion and like to see it done. Thank you.
Okay, anyone?
Mayor?
Yes, who's this?
Finance Director Dalstrand. I have the number that Alderman Crishell was looking for. As of the end of September, then the dollar value of the accounts that are more than 30 days past due is a little over $25,600. We historically do not really have a collection issue. We do very, very well at collecting accounts. So we don't have a huge amount that's outstanding at this time.
Okay, Alderman Crishell, is that helpful?
It is. One more thing about the policy. So does it, it has to be paid in full by the next billing cycle, 30 days past the billing cycle or the billing date? Is that correct? And then there's a disconnect notice?
So on a, a regular bill goes out, you have 30 days to pay it. We would then apply a 10% penalty to the current bill only. After which time, if that bill, bill is not paid, you have about two and a half more weeks before we actually would get to the point of doing turn offs. The goal is not to turn off. That's not the goal at all. The goal is to collect the money. And we will work with residents at any point to, to reach a payment plan with them if they're unable to make a, a payment to us. So if they do not pay the whole thing in full, we can reach an arrangement with them and that happens all the time.
Okay, that, that was my, that was my question. I wanted to make sure that that was, that that was in place. Okay, thank you. And then the last question. The, the bills that we were referring to were the July and August, which were due August and September, right? So if we, if we say we're going to reinstate this at the next billing, which would be October? Or when would the next billing cycle be?
The next bill goes out October 10th. And that would be the, that would be the new bills. And after that, we would reinstate the penalties, beginning with the due date on those bills, which would be in November.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else would like to have a comment or question? Just identify yourself and speak up.
Alderman Davalos, yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things after listening to Alderman Goodman and some of the other Aldermen's thoughts on this. I'm trying to look in, I'm having a little bit of, of an empathy for some of these landlords. I don't know how it's, if, I don't know how this is all set up. So if the individual doesn't pay, then the landlord is responsible for the building and that's what's going on, or is each individual person tied into their own bill? Or does it depend?
Excuse me. The city requires ultimately the landlord, the property owner for a rental unit to pay any unpaid bills by their tenant. So if a tenant just simply takes off and doesn't, you know, pay whatever, but doesn't pay the utility bills, when they come due, the landlord is on the hook to pay those.
Okay, so I do have some empathy because in a lot of these situations, you know, they're, they're not getting rent either. So that's going through my mind. The other thing that's going through my mind is when we changed this before, the 54 people that ended up with the 53 or whatever paying their bills, and then an arrangement was worked out with the other renter, is very impressive to me and sort of gives me some history to say maybe it's okay to reinstate this at this point, as long as the city is willing to work with people that really like may not have income at all, you know, and it, I think we would be at some point. And so I don't mind, I don't mind reinstating this as long as it's supported by making financial arrangements, which I think we're doing, but that's the thing because it's just interesting that all those bills got paid. I don't know if landlords paid for tenants, I don't know, but it was, it was very striking to me when we heard it a few months ago. So I'm kind of going on that to say, maybe it'll be all right. Maybe we'll get some money back and can work with our other residents on a plan. So that's my thought.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Alderman Goodman, if I can speak a little bit more. I think the reason why all those bills got paid is because clean water is an absolute basic necessity of life. And that people who are short on money may have to go short on medicine or groceries in order to pay the water bill so that they can still have water come on when they turn on the tap. So there is a federal program called LIHEEP, the Low Income Heating and Energy Assistance Program, that has been around for decades and which provides federal support for low income people whose energy, electricity and natural gas bills are unpaid during difficult economic times. And there has been a proposal in Congress, which hasn't gotten very far unfortunately, to create a very similar program to LIHEEP for water, acknowledging the reality. unfortunately, to create a very similar program to LIHEEP for water, acknowledging the reality that water, like heat and power, is a necessity of life. Ultimately, it's possible that maybe some federal stimulus plan will pass one of these days, and that maybe a project like that could be incorporated into it. I think that people like us should use our voices, should use our advocacy to try and make sure that a project like that does happen in the future, to make sure that our residents, especially our low income residents and the people in this community who are in need, have their basic necessities of life met. But in the meantime, I think reinstating a policy which calls for people to be adding late fees to water bills at a time when, as I think staff said, there are more delinquent accounts than usual because we are in a very bad recession. There are 25 million people in this country receiving unemployment right now. That's not usual. Those economic impacts are being disproportionately felt by people of color in this country, by low income people whose jobs are more likely to be in hospitality sectors and service sectors that are unable to be done from home by a computer, the way that we're able to conduct business here today. We're not very representative of those people who need this kind of assistance. And I think that as public officials who need to be thinking about the least among us, we should be setting our policies with those needy people in mind. And that, I feel, is my role as an elected official. So I disagree very strongly with this recommendation. I understand that staff has a good history of working with unpaid accounts to try and get them paid, but I don't think that the threat of shutting off somebody's water is appropriate in a pandemic when we need people to be washing their hands, even if that would mean a little bit more money. And I'm very well acquainted with the financial condition of the Water and Sewer Fund and how difficult the financial situation could be for that fund going forward. That's something that the EMRP Work Group has been working on for months. And as Finance Director Dolestrand said, we are not talking about a very large amount of money here. So if you're if you're making this decision because you think it's important for the financial stability of the Water and Sewer Fund, then I think you're misunderstanding the scale of this situation. If this was to go on with no shut offs and no late fees indefinitely for years to come, sure, that could be a problem. But if we followed the state's guidance that the Illinois Commerce Commission has put forward in a recent letter to all the utility companies in the state of Illinois, and just extended the moratorium until the end of March, as the governor has recommended and as the unanimous commission recommended, I don't think that that would cause tremendous financial hardship for our Water and Sewer Fund. And I think it would be the more humane thing to do. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else wish to chime in?
Mayor, yeah, Alderman Davalos again. The other, you know, I just keep putting myself in these situations. And somebody, either Administrator Coakley or Finance Director Dolestrand, mentioned, you know, not that you can control anybody else's life, but it might be better to figure out ways to keep the money coming in from people, even if they're having a hard time. Because what if they get a job and then they are, you know, presented with this 12 months or something of unpaid water bills? And I would, if I was doing it myself, I'd rather figure out a plan that I could pay a little bit at a time than to have, you know, a huge bill at the end. So I just want to make it easier for our residents. And I do think that the city will figure out with people that absolutely cannot come up with money. Because you're right, we don't want to shut water off. Absolutely not. In a pan, absolutely not. But I don't think we're going to really be doing that. But again, what happens if the landlords don't pay? Are they there on the same thing? They would get the penalty then going forward? I mean, I don't know how that works. I just at some point, we got a lot of people here. We have residents, we have landlords, we have the city. And how do you enforce it with a landlord? You just send them a bill and hope they could pay?
I presume. Kevin, how is that handled?
So the way that is handled, it's handled a number of ways. One, when a landlord, when when tenant one moves out and tenant two is going to move in, that's a time where we do collect a lot of of those delinquent accounts from a landlord that a tenant has not paid. We also have the option in the long term of leaning a property, which we do regularly as well for any delinquent accounts. That would be another way we could do do it as well. And we can certainly work out payment arrangements with a landlord as well. And we do that as well, too. So there are a number of ways that that this can be handled.
Thank you very much.
Yes, City Administrator Coakley?
Thank you. I would just add one thing to what Kevin was saying. The presumption would be the landlord, the property owner is ongoing for multiple years into the future. At some point, the city will go back to shutting off. So should tenant one be there all the way through, if we extended it to March 31, as it was recommended or suggested, the tenant may not be there in April because they may be evicted after the state removes their moratorium. But the landlord eventually would have to pay that bill, or the water would be shut off, and then they could not re lease lease again that property to tenant two. Not only would we not change the account into the new name until it was paid, but we could leave the water turned off until it was paid. So there would ultimately be a bigger control, I think, over the property owner than possibly the tenant that might be able to move. I don't want to disparage tenants. I've been one of my life. My I have kids who are tenants. They're good people, too. But they could probably move on and get out from under that easier than the than the property owner by far.
Okay, anyone else?
I would just add a couple of observations before we have a roll call. I'm in favor of reinstating the policy. For what I stated earlier, I think it's a short term help that will cause a lot more long term gain if we allow people to accumulate large water bills. Even when they get back on their feet, they're going to be struggling yet. And to have to be faced with that, I think is very unfair to them. I think it's very, very clear by what we've done in the past that we bend over backwards to work with folks that are in distress. It is our certainly our intention to work with everyone to make sure they are not cut off from utility. I think that's the absolute last option that we would ever use. I can remember as a younger person, a self employed person, being short many, many months with not having enough to meet all my obligations. I always considered it most important to pay utilities because that's was the most important thing to my family, that they had their electricity and their water and everything. I would think that people in distress probably look at it the same way. And this is a very important thing to provide. Certainly, fresh water is a necessity. So I hate to see people in distress. I also hate to add to that distress. So it seems to me that we've made it very clear that we'll work with people that are in genuine distress and try to minimize that for them. But the best thing is return to our former policy from my perspective. So everyone's had an ample chance to say their piece. Let's have a roll call, please.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener? Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Nay.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you for a thoughtful discussion, and thank you for all of you that really, obviously, to me, put together, put your citizens' welfare first, even though we have a different perspective. Apparently, that you all think about the people that we serve. We have nothing under unfinished business this evening. We have no new business, at least on the agenda. We have a closed session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
Alderman Davalos, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Alderman Ashauer.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for your participation, the elected officials and staff, and thank you for your attention, citizens and those that are watching at home.
Thank you, Mayor. Good night.
Thank you.